Okay, we'll bring the meeting to the Amador County Border Supervisors to order. We just came out of closed session. One, conference with labor negotiations, direction was given to staff. Two, confidential minutes were approved. Would you mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're on to public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action in a subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute time limit.
Morning Bill, looks like you're raring to go this morning.
Well, yeah.
There we go.
I am, okay. Two things quickly because I've already sent you emails. One, the tribe needs to do what they have to do to clean up the trash along Jackson Valley Road. They've refused to do so, they said, they told Chuck that they would, they didn't. Trash still there, they have an obligation legally. And my suggestion was, would be for county council to get hold of their legal counsel and see if they can't work it out. And if not, for you folks to authorize filing litigation action against them to compel them to do what they're supposed to do. So, that's one. Two, dark skies ordinance, third time's the charm. Guys, come on, give me a break. Get back from Christmas, I'll have a dark skies ordinance. What do you say?
Well, I will say for myself that I voted no against it. The other thing is, may I ask why you want the dark skies so much?
Because as Todd Holmes, who lives across the road from us, said to these Lambert's who were then our neighbors, I have a very tall flagpole and there's a light on top of it. And I used to keep that light going. And Holmes complained to the Lambert's, he says, would you tell him to turn that light off? We came here to live in this valley, to observe and love the night skies, the moon and the stars and all of that. We don't need his damn light shining almost toward our, where we're at. So, that's fine.
Bill, before you leave, Greg, can you address on the tribe, do they have an obligation now to do anything per the compact, per the intergovernmental services agreement?
So, the agreement we have, as you know, I think you know, Bill, they, they do not feel that they were properly required to enter that agreement. And they've told us that they aren't paying us, and they aren't paying us. The money that they, the impact fees that they are required to pay, we have reached out to the tribe and they have told us that they will continue picking up the trash. The county, to avoid litigation with the tribe, agreed to delay the payment portion of their obligation. The rest of the agreement arguably is in place, but there's a reason the county's not litigating that. It's because they're in a fight with the state about the requirement to enter that agreement in the first place. And that's why we haven't pursued it.
The requirement though comes out of the stipulated decision handed down by the arbitrator.
No, that's been replaced, long since replaced.
How could that be replaced, Rick?
By the new intergovernmental agreement.
I saw nothing in that agreement that said it replaced the need for those folks to do what they're supposed to do. If you'll direct me to that area where it says that, then I'll be happy to go home and look at it, but I didn't see it and I don't think they can, in my legal opinion. Anyway.
Thank you.
That's enough of that. Merry Christmas, all you folks.
Happy holidays.
See you next year.
Merry Christmas to you too, Bill.
Anybody else from the public?
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Brown and gentlemen of the board. My name is Tracy Burkner and today I'm representing Visit Amador. I would like to give you an update on our efforts as the Amador County Destination Marketing Organization. Six months ago, Visit Amador Board of Directors sought the advice of a nonprofit board consultant. And during this process, we developed a plan to boost the marketing of Amador and our presence as a dynamic destination marketing organization. Through this process, the executive board has decreased administrative expenses by eliminating the executive director position. We have further reduced our expenses by eliminating our office space and now share space with the Amador Vintners Association in Plymouth. The executive board has transitioned to a working board and taken on the task of enhancing the Visit Amador marketing goals. We are all volunteers. We coordinated a meeting with the Amador Chamber of Commerce recently and the Amador Vintners Association to streamline our efforts. As a team, we have outlined responsibilities and goals to help create a sustainable and successful business climate that is enhanced by increased tourism and community support. We are committed to working together for the success of our community. A new and improved marketing plan includes TV appearances, TV commercials, radio spots, digital billboards, regional print magazines, which you have received a copy of our most recent, a couple of our most recent, and San Francisco Chronicle, social media influencers, travel shows, and much more. Current promotions are authentic holiday celebrations in Amador, which can be heard on Sacramento radio stations. On TV and radio, we currently have Win an Amador Adventure promotion happening, features over $2,000 in prizes, all donated by local businesses. Our social media presence continues to grow as we promote our local businesses and activities. After the new year, our message will shift to outdoor winter adventures, as you see in the piece that you have in front of you, destination weddings and food adventures. Those will include the development of the Amador Burger Route. As you know, there are many great burgers in Amador County, from the iconic Moo Burger at Melon Faye's, to the popular hike and ski after ski Giant 88 Burger, to the gourmet Game Burgers at the End of Nowhere Wine Tasting Room. We are excited to share all the burger bounty that Amador has to offer. As a reminder, Visit Amador has monthly meetings, they're open to anyone, and are held on the third Thursday of every month at the Hotel Sutter. The board meetings begin at nine, and then our marketing update meetings are from 9:30 to 10:30-ish. And that gives an opportunity for everybody to understand what our current marketing is doing and provide all attendees with updates and networking time afterwards. The Visit Amador boards and all of our partners wish to thank you for your continued support of Visit Amador, and we wish you a very happy holiday season and a prosperous new year.
Thank you.
Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Yeah, the picture of the food there, that looks like a dish of taste, is that right?
It happens to be, yes.
I saw a commercial on TV the other day, Saturday, I was outside the county and they were advertising it, so was that from the?
That was from Visit Amador.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
I told you, spoke to you before the meeting, I'm gonna try to get to the meeting, but I have a, I own business association meeting that morning at 8:30, so.
Great, great, terrific. And you're all on our mailing list now, so you're receiving our updates and please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions.
And I do like to hear that there's some outreach to work together between organizations, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We, we had an initial meeting and, and really came up with some great ideas, and we'll be meeting after the beginning of the, of the year again, and, and moving forward on some different things, so we're pretty excited about it.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, on to approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the items on consent, anybody from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's one item there that I could have a perception of conflict on, so we'd take that separate, I appreciate that. That would be item, I thought I wrote that down. Uh, it would be, give me one second.
Which one was it?
Item five M.
Who'd approve the consent agenda absent five M?
Okay, call for the vote on these. All in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor Nada, you, since it's consent, there's no discussion, you don't have to leave the, don't have to move.
I'll move to approve item five M then.
Okay.
Second.
All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, four zero, four one zero. Hey, we're on to the homeless persons Memorial Day, discussion of possible action relative to adoption and presentation of resolution recognizing December 21st, 2023 is National Homeless Persons Day. We have a presenter, or do, would anybody like to speak on this right now then?
Good morning, my name is Ty Pulskamp, I'm currently working with Operation Care as they conclude their homeless outreach program funded under a Sutter Health Grant. And I am also representing a new, a new nonprofit that formed over the summer called Small Change for Big, which began with a jar of coins at Rosebud's Cafe in 2017 after Dave Tierpax's track team did a 24-hour relay fundraiser for the homeless student fund, which is something housed under ATCA that allows families to pay for sports equipment and school supplies and all sorts of things that we don't think of as needing to be paid for by the individual family in a public school system. Let's just introduce myself.
My name is Trixie and I work for Cal Voices at Sierra Wind Wellness and Recovery Center. I also have a street ministry that's supported by my church, the Sutter Hill Seventh Day Avenue Church, and I'm with Small Change for Big and I'm on the homeless task force as well.
So I think probably everyone knows that December 21st is the longest night of the year, and shortly before the 21st last year here in Jackson, a homeless man was found dead in his tent. And Trixie and I have hosted a number of vigils, in fact, I've hosted a number of vigils, the first one was at Amador High School just after September 11th. But we, we had just heard of this nationally observed homeless persons Memorial Day, and so we hosted our first local vigil last year after a friend had passed away on the streets. Here in the time I've lived in Jackson for the last eight years in the city, and two friends, Perry and Vaughn, were killed crossing the street, and they were both seniors. Vaughn was seated on the Transportation Commission and was working actively to advocate for access to transportation for folks who are unhoused and living under the poverty threshold. And then two years ago, our good friend Luke, many of you may know Luke, Luke lived up country for years, was raised, born and raised here in Amador County, and Luke died as a result of the elements there outside in Pine Grove Park over the winter. So, though there has not been a recognized statistically counted homeless persons death in this county this year, it is a complicated source of data. And so there's a big disconnect across the country between how many homeless people there are from one year to the next and what that would mean as far as who has died. Frank, I know you know the point in time count is a complicated, convoluted process to try to gather a sense of the population of homeless Americans. So, it is a somber event. We did have a significant turnout last year, there were about 47 people there, ranging in age from I think four up into their 80s. Folks are welcome to come, we will have warm beverages and warm gear, things that have been donated by the Pregnancy Help Center, Sierra Winds, Operation Care, that kind of stuff. And we'll have a couple of cathartic moments, we'll share a song or two together and lift people up in prayer and memoriam, and I would invite you to come. I would imagine that all of you have had a friend over the course of your lifetime who came into a situation that they couldn't get himself out of, and that, so this is something that touches everyone's heart, I don't know if you know that.
I do. God makes it clear in His word that we should love our neighbors as ourselves. He defines neighbor as being any person around us regardless of their ethnic, religious, or socioeconomic status. So if you have been, if you've never been homeless, then I'm glad for you. If you have, and you're able to come out of that, whether you were, you pulled yourself up by your bootstraps or you had someone to help you, I'm thankful that you're not homeless anymore and that. or you had someone to help you, I'm thankful that you're not homeless anymore and that you were able to do that, and I'm thankful that somebody helped you. But there are people who, who are out there right now in the cold, in the rain, and maybe they're feeling lonely, and they're not us, and they don't have what we have, but they're still people, and they deserve compassion, and they deserve love. And so, I believe that love is a verb, and it's an action, and it's not a feeling that we hold to ourselves, it's something that we extend out to others, and we can affect others in a positive way. So, these people, they just wanna be seen, and they wanna be heard, and they wanna be validated because they're people and they're humans. And if you have love, and you wanna show that love, and you wanna show that compassion, if anybody does, I just say, think about it and pray about it, and God will show you and tell you what to do, and there are people that can help you if you, if you want to extend that love, like Small Change for Big, and like Sierra Wind, and our homeless task force. And I do invite you to come to be a part of what we're doing on Thursday, as we join together in unity to honor people who have died being homeless, and honor those who have struggled with homelessness and are still struggling, and those who have come out of that. So please join us, and thank you for doing this.
So the vigil is Thursday at 5:30 at Pecovich Park, and we don't know each other very well, but I'm a, I'm a mass man, I'm a fiscal conservative, and I like data, always have, I probably got it from my grandpa. But I was trying to get some thoughts that would be easily translated through data to kind of paint a better picture of what it looks like to be homeless, or what it looks like to die homeless. And so in nearby Sacramento County, data is more available than here for us in Amador County. But in Sacramento, the average age of death, the mortality age of a homeless woman is 43, and of a homeless man is 52. And so the average age in Sacramento County for someone who is not homeless to die is between 72 and 82. So I think that paints a clear picture of what the chunk of life that takes, is taken out of a, of a person when they're trying to navigate homeless person, homelessness. The other statistics that came out of the homeless task force meetings that we learned a couple, I think probably about a year now, is that the average age of a homeless person across the country is 12. And so between those two things, I hear that it is, it is, there are a lot of young families struggling, and that it is a fatal circumstance, it's very difficult to navigate homelessness and live through it. So I do thank you for your consideration of the affirmation of the homeless persons Memorial Day, which is observed across the country. If you have any questions or anything you need to say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else wanna speak on this? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution.
Um, yes, Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to speak this a little bit.
Sure.
Um, made a statement that they couldn't get themselves out of the situation they're in. That may be a little bit of a misnomer, maybe it's won't, or will not, get themselves out of the situation. I've had family members, some relatives that have had problems with homelessness, and normally you can trace it back to drugs or alcohol, or maybe sometimes mental. There's been people I've tried repeatedly to help, and you can't help them till they wanna help themselves. Also, interesting side note, years ago I was campaigning, some guy won one of my signs, so I ended up going up there, putting it there, and I got there about dark, and this old man comes out, and he wasn't very tall, and he was, he was pretty white, and he was hustling, and I felt really bad because he was barefoot. And anyway, he says, yeah, he's glad I was there, and I felt really bad, but he was happy. We got talking, though, when he was 11 years old, he ran away from home. And I thought, okay, he went to grandma's house, got some milk and cookies, and was mad at his mom and dad, and no, he ran away from home permanent. So he said he pulled a wagon up and down the railroad tracks, picking up scrap steel, and he sold that to live on, and he's now, and then mechanic felt sorry for him, gave him a little bit of copper wire, or gave him a couple bucks for helping work on a car. He lied about his age, was 15, went in the military, became a submariner, got out at 17, went to work at the Peterbilt Factory in Newark, which is gone now, pushing a broom. One day an old man said, hey kid, you wanna try doing some sheet metal work? He says, sure, I'll try that, and he's, oh, and his eyes lit up, he said, I like doing sheet metal work, he's, plus it paid better. And he had a nice house, got a nice place, the point I'm making is, yeah, homelessness, I'd wish on nobody, without what old man went through, I'd not wanna go through. But I thought about it, I thought, wow, I thought, you know, I really wanna know why he ran away from home. And I don't wanna be rude and embarrass him, but I thought, you know, I wanna know. I say, if you don't mind, I'd like to know, why'd you run away from home? He said, oh, that's easy, he said, my father was an alcoholic, and when he got drunk, he got kinda mean, and whatever money we had, he used up. He, the streets looked pretty inviting. Only point I'm making is, sometimes there's choices in life, and I'm not condemning the homeless people, they have my sympathy, but a lot of times, I know a lot, fair number of homeless people, a lot of times you'll find it's drug use, you say, hey, look, I'll help you any way I can, I'll do whatever I can for you. No, I like doing my drugs. So it's not, sometimes it's something we can't fix in society. So I just wanted to bring that up, it's not a desirable thing, dying homeless is a horrible thing, but sometimes it's something we can't fix. Yeah, there's programs, but you gotta be willing to build those programs, and you gotta complete them, you gotta stay off them. With the resolution, I do have a couple things I'd like changed.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
Okay, I myself, I ran away from home when I was 14, and I grew up on the streets, and that's the reason why I do what I do. I was an alcoholic before, before then, I mean, by 14, I was an alcoholic, and I was a meth addict for over 25 years, and I was an alcoholic for even longer, and I did it all. I grew up on the streets, and I lived on the streets a lot, and I've gone through homelessness a lot. And so, yes, I did have mental health issues because it affects you mentally, and I was an alcoholic, and I was a drug addict, and I, and I did all, everything on the streets. I didn't have anybody that helped me, and I didn't have the willpower to help myself because of all those issues that I had. Just trying to address even one of those issues on my own was too difficult for me. And so, yeah, so some, some people don't have the will, and so God is what did it for me, I turned to Jesus, and he saved me, and, and that's what happened for me, but some people aren't there yet, but really, and, and, and we can't do it for them, but we can, they're still people, and they're still struggling, and they still deserve love and compassion, and they deserve to be offered resources, and if they can, if they're in a place where they're willing to take those resources and to get the help, then, then I'm glad for them. But, you know, our job is just to love them and to be there for them, and to support them, and to show compassion to them.
And in this context, Supervisor Onetto, can you imagine your family not being to afford, not being able to afford creating and printing an obituary to honor your contribution to their lives? So we're talking today about people who have died, and their families are not able to do that, they're either not, not able to keep track of them long enough, or for one reason or another, without a community honoring them, their friends who are likely also homeless don't have the opportunity to go to a funeral and celebrate their life. And so this really is about honoring the lives and deaths of people both here and across the country who have died without safe shelter. The complicated nature of addressing and mitigating poverty in this country and across the world is not the topic today, it is more about a funeral service for people who have died across the country without shelter.
On the resolution, there's a couple items I'd like to have changed. It talks about where a shelter is a fundamental right. I put where is shelter is a need, and basic human, it's a, take that out, it's a basic human need. I don't think it's, it's a right. Is it a need? Yes. Is it a right? No. We all have the, we all have the right to life, and freedom.
I believe it is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I said. And also, I'd like to have that struck, I don't see where it's a right, it's not interconstitution as a right we have.
It's a matter of maintaining life, sir. Give it a year, try today, we'll see you next year what it's like and how you're doing after living outside for 365 days.
And also, there's a couple places it's a right, I don't think it's a right, is it something that, is it something that we can strive to provide as a community? Hey, fine, it's not a right. I don't mind trying to help people, we have programs to help people, that's fine, I just have a problem with putting the word right in there because it's not, it's not a right.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thoughts from the other board members?
You know, I think it's okay the way it is.
Supervisor Forster?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it, Supervisor Crew?
Little question, I understand where Supervisor Onetto was coming from, but I have no problem with it, as written.
Okay.
I'll call for question then.
Yeah, wish, anybody else from the public wanna speak on it? Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Parker, this wasn't prepared, so it might be a little fractured, but two aspects, one on homelessness in general, I think any discussion of it that comes at it as a monolith, and talking about the homeless, is implicitly going to be having, is gonna be implicitly flawed, because there are, as sort of was tangentially touched on, there are myriad of ways that people can end up in that, and if you have a dozen, if you got a dozen people who were homeless, and you looked at their stories and how they got there, and why they're still there, it's gonna be different in all likelihood for each one. So, I think we need to be very cautious of coming at issues around people who are unhoused as, addressing it as capital T, capital H, the homeless, because I think they are all very varied, and what, and what each of those individuals need to help get them out of that situation, if they wanna get out of that situation, is gonna be different. So I think we have to be very careful of trying to come up with a one-size-fits-everyone when it comes to addressing people who are, who are unhoused. The other aspect, and, and I don't, I don't doubt, I don't doubt the statistic, I just was horrified by it, and I wanna look into it a little bit more and how it was collected, but if the average age is 12, then, you know, just simple math, that means half the people at least are, are under that. And I think at 12, no matter what your situation is, there's a whole set of things, whereas a minor, we don't hold you fully responsible yet, because you're still not fully baked as, as a person, an individual. So at a minimum, looking at those who are under the age of eighteen, you know, under the age of 18, for whatever reason, are on the, on the streets, whether that's because their parents are choosing to be there, or whatever else, and trying to do something, even if we don't do anything to help adults, helping those who are minors, both I think is, is not only a good thing to do, but also in all likelihood, a good investment, because if they're homeless when they're 12, I would guess, again, all I have statistics on this, that the likelihood of being homeless at 36 is very much higher. So if there's, in that, in that, there is, there are expenses to give to society and community and everything else around people who are, you know, who are, who are unhoused, and, you know, all like that to be gone in various ways. So if we can intervene at 12 and keep that person from being homeless at 24, and 36, and 48, if they make it that long, I think that's likely a good investment overall. The last comment was on the issue regarding rights versus needs. Having, someone having a right to something doesn't mean that we have to, it means it has to be available, should they choose it, it doesn't mean we have to put so much into it that we are forcing them to accept that right. So, the subtle difference between right and need, I think I agree with the majority of the board, it's, you know, as good, as fine as it is, it's, I think people need to have the, have a, have a right to an option that gives them a reasonable path to shelter, should they choose to engage with it. And you are right, there are people who, for whatever reason, don't, but I think it's a right to have a way to get there if they want to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just one thing to the record, I don't remember quite the numbers, but the county cleaned up the homeless encampment behind Walmart Wicklow Way area, there was a pretty good-sized number of folks back there that were homeless, and we offered them everything the county had, we got shelter, we got programs, we got this, we got that, except for one lady who was, she was very sick, I think she's terminally ill, they all said, hey dude, we don't want nothing. But I mean, I think, I think you folks said a couple different times, I've heard, over the years, even the family, family member, relative I have, it gets down to where you can't help somebody unless they wanna help themselves. And if they say, we like it where we're at, yeah, we're homeless, but it's our thing, you're not gonna help them. It's like if somebody, like the lady that was, Ms. Trixie, said, hey, she had drug problems and other problems, she made the choice, and she said, God help her, Jesus, but until, until she makes that choice, we can put every program, we can, you could put, put the young lady in chains and drag her, drag her to programs, and she'd say, um, soon as she gets out, she wants to go do drugs, it's what a person's gonna do, it comes down to personal choice wanting to get out of that. Am I against helping them? Absolutely not. But as far as, is shelter a fundamental need? Absolutely. Is it a fundamental right? I don't see it, no. Can we make it available for people? Sure.
Okay, what's going on, I'm gonna read the resolution as is. Whereas the National Coalition of Health, of the homeless, and National Health Care for the Homeless Council have designated December 21st, 2023, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Each, every year, thousands of men, women, and children die in California without stable and secure shelter. Homelessness and the risk of homelessness continue to be the serious challenge for many in Amador County residents who have the right to adequate, to adequate food, housing, clothing, safety, and healthcare. And whereas shelter is a fundamental right, and a basic human need, and the homeless raises a person's risk of illness, injury, and death. And whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered, inadequate-housed, low-income individuals and families in Amador County, and whereas the county homeless task force has worked diligently to advance potential solutions in bringing awareness to the struggles of the unhoused neighbors, and whereas local nonprofits, organizations, Small Change for Big, Sierra Wind Wellness Center, and Operation Care will host the second annual longest-night vigil in Amador County on December 21st in Jackson's Pecovich Park, and whereas the homeless persons memorial service in Jackson will commemorate, commemorate, excuse me, our neighbors who have passed away as a result of homelessness, a local resident joined individuals across the state and country remembering those who have died in their own communities. And whereas remembering those who have died without homes of their own, we recognize the urgency and homelessness, and the need to compassionate response, and the county's collective commitment to prevent such deaths in the future. I'd like to call for a vote on this, I'm, I'm, to me.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Second?
Under discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not opposed to recognize and apply the homeless people, they have my sympathy, and even my help at times, but I don't, I don't, I have a problem with the term that it's a right, so I'm gonna vote no.
I think if you look up rights in the dictionary, I mean, you're interpreting it one way, but what it says as an adjective, morally good, justified, or acceptable, oh, it doesn't mean, yes, you have to give it to anyone, it just means it's the right thing to do.
I understand that, Richard, but there's some things in a nation, you start going on slippery slopes, and I think it's just heading down a slippery slope.
Okay, we're gonna call for the vote, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. We have the physical resolution here, but we have to redo it, so we'll have to bring it back to you. Ari?
Thank you, it's wonderful if you would maybe join us on Thursday and bring it then, we'd love to have you read it aloud at the vigil at 5:30 in Pecovich Park. If you're not busy helping other homeless people at that time, we'd welcome your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to 3B, request of Adco LLC for declaration of public convenience in regards to their pending Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, application to sell alcohol beverages at the party.
in regards to their pending Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, application to sell alcohol beverages at the party marine general store. This declaration is required because of the number of licenses and the census tract exceeds the current number allowable.
Mr. Chairman, we've received the, uh, the request that's attached here. Uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if the board has any questions. I think the applicant is here, uh, if, uh, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions from the board?
There's somebody here. I don't know if he wants anything. Are you here for this item, sir?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to speak on it?
Yes, I thank the board for taking the time to consider this matter. Uh, it was licensed before from 92 to 2018, and I guess in the subsequent contracts for different concessionaires to handle the facilities there, uh, in the East Bay Mud Recreation Area, that, uh, the one, one last licensee there was in 2018. Adventco LLC, uh, does operate the cafe there and they do have an on sale type 41 beer and wine license, uh, currently issued by the department, uh, ABC, so.
And, and by the application and everything, it looks like just as, just a small refrigerator, it's not anything really major.
In, in my career with the agency and then afterwards in retirement, asked by the public to come back to a system with the red tape from the state. This was the first, uh, floating, uh, premises that I have encountered coming across the parking lot, looking over the berm and going, it's a lake, where's the building? And then going to see it, it's a small, uh, it's on a barge. It does, uh, move because the, uh, lower, the lake level is lowered. So basically they move it in anticipation of the rainfall for the winter. But in the, uh, when they open the park back up, they go ahead and put it always in the same, uh, location. And that this is beginning, basically going to be confined to a self-serve cooler. And the, uh, store is going to have, uh, one clerk and the clerk is going to have a full view of that cooler for, uh, which will contain non-alcoholic beverages, sodas, juices, beer and/or wine for the convenience of the boaters who can tie up to the, uh, slips that are attached to the store uh, at the end of the marina at the peninsula there. Uh, I did, uh, email in attachments, so I hope you all have those.
Yep. Yes, it was a very nice drawing.
Thank goodness for a high school mechanical drawing and, uh, taking out my kindergarten sized pencils and crayons.
What, what is your name, sir?
Rod Sagunovich.
And you're representing, um?
Adventco LLC.
LLC, okay.
ABC Licensing Consultant.
Hey, thank you.
I thank the board.
Hey, anything from the public? Yes, sir.
Super quick one, not knowing whether the board's inclined to go yes or no on it. And again, Russ Parker, um, if it goes yes, I think this is probably a completely trivial thing, but a, asking that there be a sticker or something on it that says, you know, buzz boating is drunk boating, you're probably already going to put one of those on there. But just, you know, the only issue in alcohol and lakes is people often forget that it's every bit as dangerous to boat drunk as it is to drive drunk. So I think that would be minimal if any impact to the repuster, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Hey, back to the board. Move to declare a public convenience for necessity and direct staff to indicate such to the ABC board.
Okay.
Could we add the, uh, what the gentleman says, some type of simple advertisement of buzz?
I'd be fine, I'd be fine with that.
Supervisor?
Safety's always a priority.
Right.
I mean, I don't think people.
Would you have a problem with that? Okay.
I don't think it'd make much difference, but it can't hurt.
Hey, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, that is approved, five to zero. Thank you very much. Onto 3C, discussion of possible action relative to a request for funding to, for improvements to Plymouth Veterans Park by Jim Wise with the Plymouth Rotary. The funds will be given to the city of Plymouth from the Veterans Fund after an agreement is created and signed. No general funds will be used. The Veterans Fund currently sits at approximately $161,000. Good morning.
Members, good, good morning, um, and members of the staff. Um, thank you again for the courtesy to appear before you this morning. Um, I know we've had a chance to provide an update, uh, to the board, um, and to try to address any questions that you may have. Um, and on behalf of, of our Veterans Park Committee, um, I want to thank you for all the, uh, help and guidance. Um, and, uh, ask you formally this morning if, uh, the, uh, county would, uh, agree to proceed with funding of this money that the county holds, um, for the city for the construction and enhancement of this park with an understanding, um, that the funds would go from the county to the city of Plymouth. Uh, and I can assure you that the city is accepting of those funds in an agreement, um, with this methodology as to how the transfer would happen. And, um, I, again, want to thank you all for all the help that you provided and the insight. Um, and if there's any questions that you have, happy to answer that right now.
So it's the entire $161,000 is, is the request for the transfer?
Yes, sir. Uh, we are in a position where we could utilize, um, all of these funds for the upcoming components of the construction in the park. Yes, sir.
Okay, so for the rec, oh, I'm sorry. No, I just, for the record, it would be, uh, 161, 711 and 68 cents, uh, that we would be transferring to the, the city. Um, the remainder, any interest that comes in before then will just get wrapped in the general fund.
Any other questions for any board members?
I asked, um, County Council if we should have any accounting coming back to the board. He said in prior instances that wasn't required, like in, um, what, with the Ione Memorial District.
We, we gave impact fees, county gave impact fees to the city of Ione for, uh, tennis courts at Howard Park. And this is essentially the agreement that we used in that instance. But if the board wants to see some kind of summary accounting or whatever the board would like, we can add that to this agreement.
Other questions?
You know, if you didn't do it in Ione, I don't know if I'd do it here, it's, um.
Well, maybe it was a mistake we didn't do it in Ione.
It's going to be pretty visible what they do.
It's not going to be hidden.
Um, if I could just address that, um, the funds, uh, that we are using, um, are all subject to absolute transparency. We would be more than happy to provide a full accounting as we're going to have to do anyway. This is a 501(c)(5) foundation that is essentially the contracting entity for this, um, this enterprise. Um, and as such, we're going to have to do, um, full transparency for every dollar that we get in and every dollar that we get out. There's no problem in providing that type of accounting back, uh, to the board.
All right, even if you just do it voluntarily, that, that'd be fine.
Happy to do so.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to comment on this? Anybody from Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the board.
I have one minor, minor, minor correction on the, just the wording, one, one word on the agreement, and the county council has changed that.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we approve the transfer of the District 5 memorial funds to the city of Plymouth.
Okay.
I'll second that. Thank you, Pat.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, it's five, zero, it's five, zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you so much.
Supervisors, just to be clear, you, you approved the agreement and if and when it's signed and approved by the city of Ione to come back for Plymouth, Plymouth?
Yeah.
So that, that's the action. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the holidays.
Hey, we're on to 3D, proposed resolution intention to establish regulations for the future wineries, tasting rooms, and event locations in the A agricultural, R1A, single-family resident zoning districts and the future enrollments into the AG exclusive agricultural Williams and Mac zoning district. Morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
Chuck Beatty with the Planning Department. So your, your land use committee supervisors, Axe and Forster have been working with, uh, the general public and representatives of the wine industry for a little over a year and a half to develop, um, potential amendments to the county code that would help mitigate the impacts, future impacts of, um, the wine, wine industry on the county, particularly when, uh, particularly impacts that are related to, um, events and things that are more, uh, any, towards the entertainment industry rather than, than wine production. Um, that, over, I think we had 10 meetings, um, the first five or six of those, we, we basically listened. We had just long discussions about, uh, what the public's concerns were, what the wine industry needed, what were reasonable numbers of events and, uh, activities that, that they needed to function. And, um, the, you know, rather than drafting ordinance and ask people to react to it, um, we took, oh, God, you've got a lot of info before we got to that stage and started to develop ordinances. Uh, some things that, that rose to the top throughout those discussions, uh, were maintaining the ag, ag integrity and character of the county, uh, maintaining a balance between economic development and quality of life, mitigating future, uh, impacts without penalizing existing operations, having regs that are based on, uh, parcel size and type rather than a one-size-fits-all approach, which is kind of what we have now. Uh, having property setbacks that are based on the event or frequency of, of events rather than just the event itself, uh, minimizing traffic impacts by spreading the events and tasting room hours over, over, you know, the, the entire week. Because the more you compress the hours, compress the event schedules, the more you're going to peak the traffic flow. Uh, increasing public education through better dissemination of rules and regs, uh, allowing existing facilities to continue to operate under their current ordinances rather than creating non-conformities. There are unintended consequences, particularly economic consequences to, uh, a business if you create it, uh, create a non-conforming status for it. Uh, trying to pri- prioritize ag use, which are wine, your vineyards, wine production, wine tasting over entertainment events and events. Uh, applying the county noise ordinance to wineries or tasting rooms and events where right now the county's noise ordinance only applies to residential uses and enforcement of our existing, uh, or any new rules. The drafts that are in your packet, um, that were developed seem to have pretty broad support between the public and, and the wine industry. So the primary changes that the land use committee is recommending would be that wineries that have existing building permits that were issued prior to any ordinance change would, would be able to operate under the codes that were in place at that time. And part of the reason we, we need to do that is we have, we would end up with two separate wine, wine, winery ordinances, which, um, those properties that are in the Williamson Act now, even if they don't have a winery or a tasting room on it, are contractually, uh, contractually allowed to have that use at the intensity that's in the ordinance now because of the contract. So even if you change the ordinance, it doesn't change the contract. So they're, they're contractually, uh, bound to have those uses. Uh, wineries with permits that are in non-Williamson Act properties that are issued after the adoption date then would have to meet the new, the new terms. Um, attendance levels for events will be based on the setback of the event use areas and their location on a major versus a minor road. We know that what is a major road would still be, uh, that's still be, still to be determined. Um, the ones that are, that were listed in, uh, the ordinances were included were any of the state routes, Shenandoah Road, Shenandoah School Road, Lower Ridge, Latrobe, Willow Creek, and Steiner Road. Uh, and everything else will be considered a minor road, but that's, that's still to be determined. Um, so any, any of the new wineries, there would be a base list, a base list of, of, of operations. The tasting room hours could be from 10 to 6, 7 days a week. Uh, they can participate in all the ABA sanctioned events. They could have 12 wine club events per year with up to 200 attendees and six other events with up to 60 attendees. If the winery has a 200-foot setback for the event use area, they would be allowed an additional 12 events with up to 200 attendees. And then those with a 400-foot setback for the event use areas would be allowed an additional 12 events with up to 250 attendees. And then 12 more events with up to 300 attendees. And the parking areas would be setback 50 feet from any residential properties with an occupied residence and 100 feet for idling vehicles. Uh, some things that still need to be discussed as this moves through the process is whether or not we do want to apply the, the noise ordinance to the special events rather than just, um, um, residential uses because the commercial use is currently exempt. Um, defining, you know, what, what extent does the county want to allow the, the, the wine industry to move towards, you know, an entertainment industry versus, versus an ag operation? Uh, do we want to apply the general plan idling times for construction vehicles to vehicles that are visiting wineries? Right now, that's five, five minutes. Um, and that's actually an air quality mitigation from the general plan, not a noise, not a noise issue. It was more of a noise issue in our discussions. Um, do we want to apply the fire code, um, access, um, rules on a case-by-case determination of the fire code, which is the way it's written into the, um, uh, chapter 1530? Or do we codify that into the winery ordinances? And do we keep the general plan noise limits of 10 to 7, 10 PM to 7 AM as quiet hours? Which is a pretty typical, um, quiet time, uh, in, in most general plans versus having the amplified music in there earlier than, than 10 PM. Um, if there is a general consensus of the board today to move forward with these, the next step would be for you to adopt a resolution of intent that would then direct the planning commission and staff to, to move forward with the process. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
You have one question. Um, received a letter from Frank Marino and he was questioning about like increase. I'm not sure it's the amount of E. coli in wells or the number of wells that are showing E. coli. Do you know anything about that, Chuck?
I, I, I know.
In Shenandoah Valley? Okay, well, I'll probably ask, I'm talking environmental health about that, just see what they're seeing out there. And you know, one thing I do have a little concern over, probably, pardon me, probably the biggest complaints I've heard has been music. Um, a lot of people said they didn't mind, you know, when the first, uh, winery, tasting room, whatever had music, um, or events, but they said, you know, as you get more and more and more and more, it's, it's kind of non-stop. Um, and that's something I, I think we, I have some, uh, heartburn over.
Noise traffic, those are the two big ones, and lighting.
Yeah.
Those are the three primary complaints.
Yeah, that's why we have county ordinance too. A noise ordinance that specifies the times, the quiet times, 10 PM to, what, 7 AM, I think?
7 AM.
Also, that's a hard one to deal with.
The setbacks, you know, uh, give you a bit of a buffer from noise because noise tapers off over distance.
Generally does, depending on wet weather and conditions, you know.
Well, it, it, it does, but, you know, is it perfect? No.
And I had another question as far as it talks about no parking next to our residences, which I, I can, I can agree with that. I can, um, but what about if that residence is owned or controlled by, say, like that winery tasting room? I think there should be some allowance for that if they own or control that property. Maybe they have a worker that lives there and, um, or maybe they, maybe even a winery owner or tasting room owner might live there. And they may want to have vehicles parked, you know, near their residence at times.
Yeah, that was brought up during our, uh, previous session with the board. I think Supervisor Brown brought that up, and it came up during the, um, issue with, uh, home, uh, la, um,
Yeah.
With Mesa, La Mesa Vineyards, but it was more about idling vehicles that, uh, most of them were limousines that would park up against the fence and just idle their motors during hot weather to keep the air conditioner going.
The limos and people waiting.
Yeah, what I'm saying is something a little bit different, like, you know, if, if that winery owner has an event and he wants to park cars on his front lawn, I don't see where that's any, any business of ours. Now, if it's, if it's a neighboring property, I can see having the limitations and restrictions because then you're imposing on, you know, uh, your neighbor.
That's the problem. Most of them that own the wineries don't want to park cars on their lawn.
Well, that's, that's their prerogative, you know, they don't want to, but all, all I'm saying is, and I guess who would complain? But I guess some could say that, um, Chuck has a winery and Chuck parked cars next to his house. And I think the county probably wouldn't worry too much about that.
At a winery, he probably wouldn't have a car anymore.
Okay, where do we want, um?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, read through this and, uh, I have to commend Supervisors Forster and Axe for doing a lot of the legwork to make this a readable document to move forward. It's a complicated problem. It's been going on for what, eight or 10 years? To focus it down into a, a workable is a compliment to you gentlemen.
Well, I think, thank you, but staff carried a lot of the load on this. But actually, this has been going on for, since I came on the board, so for over- this has been going on for, since I came on the board, so for over twenty years, and we've tried to tackle it twice unsuccessfully. And then it went to the planning commission with a recommendation that came back, and that was unsuccessful, so it needed to be tackled.
And this is not the final, this is, this is intent.
This is the start.
This is just the intent, and if we want to go this direction.
Yeah, I wasn't looking forward to, to delving into this again because of the future, the past unsuccessful attempts, but I think it was necessary.
Agreed.
And that's why you're being commended for.
Yeah, it was a brave act, I will agree.
Yeah. And staff, sorry, Chuck.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Any questions on, oh, come on, sir, sorry, you were blocked, I didn't see you, I apologize.
Chris Parker again, I'll keep it quick, thanks for the indulgence. When I was a, when I was growing up, we had a farm in Carmel Valley, California, south of Monterey, and a winery purchased part of the property next to us to do a tasting room and, you know, a vineyard and such. And that all in the planning of it and everything seemed quite reasonable, neighbors and everything bought in on it. The way it actually executed turned out to be terrible. I mean, there were, I mean, it became a wedding venue, kind of, you know, which in and of itself, not bad, but there was, there was essentially constant events, and it, the the usage of it was way beyond what had been initially described. The problem became, when any of that, then people tried to go back and enforce that, is nothing could really be done because the winery would say, if you don't let us do this, we've invested so much money in this property that if you, you know, pull our ability to do this, you need to make us whole on that. So, you know, essentially, the, you know, even, even though they were in violation, nothing could effectively be done to say, keep it to what you all agreed on, because otherwise, you're, you're going to get sued. My only suggestion, and this may well already be in there, is something that, that says, if, well, one of, one of these venues exceeds what the agreement ends up coming out and saying that they can do, that that can be, you know, their right to do that operation can be pulled and they are waiving any compensation for that, you know. Do, you know, stay within the limits of what you agree to do, fantastic. Go beyond those with presumably some level of demonstration that you have, so it can't just be arbitrary or capricious, and you're not going to be able to continue doing this. Because it could be, it was really, it became quite, everyone, everyone around that was, was, was unhappy. So, and not because they were doing what the agreement had been, but because they went way, way beyond what everyone had agreed would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Nick Baracco, Executive Director, Fiddle Conservancy. The Conservancy would like to voice our support for this effort to formulate new regulations for wineries in the agricultural zones of the county. We feel that placing reasonable limits on the number of events strikes a balance between the essential rural and agricultural uses of places like the Shenandoah Valley, balanced with the economic needs of the wineries that make up such a key industry in our county. Just a couple of notes on items that Chuck talked about. On the issue of the major versus minor road distinction, in which major roads are allowed larger and more often events, in the example list, Steiner Road and Shenandoah School Road are listed as examples of a major road. Frankly, though, those roads are quite small and narrow, and if we were, if we were, say, starting fresh with no wineries at all, we wouldn't consider those roads to be major roads, which would allow new wineries to come in with the upscale number of events. It would be better to just sort of establish a objective criteria ahead of time, say, a certain road capacity with safety level, and use that to distinguish between major and minor roads, rather than shoehorning in minor roads, frankly, that actually just happen to have wineries on them already. In fact, minor roads that already have a lot of wineries on them shouldn't then get even more wineries with even, allowed even more events, if you see what I'm saying here.
Yeah, I believe there are some objective criteria.
There are.
Major and minor.
There are, but the existence of, the pre, the, the existence of wineries already on a road shouldn't be one of the criteria. It should be more in terms of what the road can handle as is, is, is.
Understood. I, I, I think, yeah, it's because that area is already.
I agree, I agree. I think the committee, our committee agrees with you, but it's because the, it's already saturated.
And I would just also like to endorse the idea of a, of restrictions on idling vehicles. This is primarily the limousine problem, where we have limos taking the grand tour of the Shenandoah Valley during high summer, and the drivers keep, keep the car running the whole time that their party is in the tasting room, at five to ten minute limit where they can, they can still, you know, fire up their, their limo ahead of time to cool off so that, you know, their, their folks can, you know, have a nice cool experience, but not keeping them, keeping their limos running a full hour or half hour when the party's in the tasting room. Generally speaking, I think this is a fairly easily enforced measure. Most of the wineries require reservations and special arrangements for limo parties already, so a matter of attaching a note to your reservation saying that your limo can't idle more than five minutes at a time is a pretty reasonable measure and would cut down on both noise and air pollution, so.
Ah, as a designated driver that has gone numerous times to the wineries, it's, it is hard because I've gone out, you know, because I normally sit out in my truck while everybody's in there having their fun, and that truck warms up real quick in a hurry in the middle of the summer. So that's kind of a, I understand what you're saying, I appreciate it, but it's a, you know, that's a hard thing to do.
Think about, well, the answer's pretty simple, just pretend you're a dog, and then there is, there'd be all kinds of outrage that poor dog has walked up.
No, I, I agree with you, but it, it is just, it's a hard, it is a hard thing to do because I've tried to do that because my truck is not gas economy and, you know, and that's the best vehicle that I have that, to do tours with my family and friends, and it's, it warms up because I'm.
And, and the flip, and the, the other part of this would be making some allowances at the winery for dri, for the non-drinking drivers to have a spot, you know, be it a designated driver allowance or, yes, serving ice water in the tasting rooms so that, that those folks have something to drink or do.
Right.
Now, I will say this, I will confess, pick up a drive, generally the beat-up old gray one, it doesn't even have air conditioning, and you know, it's, I get along just fine, but I understand if you have people on a winery tour, they, in a limousine, they probably want air conditioning, so it's, and I, but I understand if somebody lives nearby, do you want somebody with an idling limousine a hundred feet away from your house? Probably not, or any vehicle for that matter.
You know, I will agree, because I've always tried to park away from anybody else, you know, that's.
And, and sometimes in high summer, when it's very busy, these things, you know, tend to stack up, but it's, it's not the, the one, the one time, it's when a half a dozen are, you know, out on, for the Fourth of July, and there's, you know, when there's six of them in the parking lot all idling, then it becomes a much bigger deal.
I agree.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, we have somebody on Zoom.
Go ahead, Jamie, when you're ready.
Good morning, gentlemen of the board, Jamie Labenco, District Five, Fiddle Town resident. I just had a quick question. I actually attended several of these land use committee meetings early on, and I know that members of the Vintners Association have been involved in this process as well. I think that's certainly important. Nobody knows better the operations of their businesses than the winery owners themselves and how they would be impacted by these types of regulations. But I'm hopeful that with coming public hearings, that our grape growers association is included, actively contacted, because it seems to me that properties that do not have existing wineries are those that would likely have the biggest impacts. And so when I reflect on how our valley has grown and how wineries have opened over the years, there comes times when the wine industry has these impacts that turn grape growers overnight into vintners so that they can get rid of their fruit essentially, and that is when you have the Dick Coopers and the Dillians of the world start to build wineries on their existing properties. And so that's almost always grape growers, and so what I'd hate to see is an ordinance that creates, you know, some issues for, you know, multi-generational families who at some point in time hope to build a winery on their land now run up against issues that would impact them, and I'd just love to make sure that the grape growers have some input on this process as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, back to the board.
Move to approve the resolution of intention. Second.
Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I meant to say aye.
And Mr. Beatty, if they're not on the list, can you get the grape growers on the email list? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to State Route eighty-eight Pine Grove Corridor Improvement Project. The bids came in over funding, we're trying to figure out where to go from here.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Good morning. Richard Vila, Public Works Director. Also, independence today, the, the help in this discussion, I have Executive Director of ACTC, John Gedney, present, and on Zoom, we have the Design Engineer, Mark Thomas, represented to answer questions regarding the bid and as well as some of the options that we may want to look at moving forward. So just wanted to acknowledge their, that presence here. As you mentioned, we had this, we put this project out to bid, it was due on December seventh, and we received five bids for the work, and they were all well over the engineer's estimate for the work, some fairly significantly. It's kind of a wide spread of, 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 of bid numbers, which is pretty interesting in itself. I've never seen anything like that, and, and I've seen where some are over, but some were twice the engineer's estimate, which is like, I'm not sure they're bidding on the same project or whatever, but so I, I, I thought that was kind of an interesting phenomenon that happened with this. The low bid from George Reed was about twenty-eight percent over the engineer's estimate, and the rest were significantly above that. When we looked at the numbers, and, and again, a gentleman from Mark Thomas can expand on this further, but there are some, I saw some items that were significantly above the engineer's estimate, and I kind of listed some here, the traffic control, the clearing and grubbing, roadway excavation, reinforced concrete pipe, mobilization, which is a wild card on any project, frankly, and the hot mixed asphalt, although the low bid came in under the engineer's estimate, I typically, we find good asphalt numbers when George Reed bids on our projects, just, that's just kind of a trend. That's whatever, that's, that's their business, so.
Does that add up to about two million dollars?
Ah, what the, um.
The way you just listed.
Those, those, those items?
Yeah, could we chisel off two million dollars worth?
Well, you wouldn't have much of a, you just can't delete bid items, you'd have to talk about looking at the project and scope and reducing the, the scope of the project, so it makes some sense. In other words, you couldn't have this project without reinforced concrete pipe, for example, or.
No, I understand that, but it sounds like you were telling me that the company that bid on it was bidding too much for those particular items.
Right, and, and that was, for the most part, that was across the board, so if you want, we can, can have the, our design engineer talk about that if that's something you want to hear about right now.
Eventually, yeah. Now, go ahead and finish your presentation.
Sure, okay, um, so that's what we have in front of us, according to our bid documents, if the county wants to water projects, we have to do it within forty-five days of the bid opening, and that puts that date deadline as January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, which is a Sunday, just, um, because of the bids came in high, you know, I, I've got some project costs listed here, construction costs, adding ten percent of, for contingency, may or may not be used, but for astute planning, I think we have to at least have ten percent contingency. We have construction management, which we have a, a firm under contract, they have a not-to-exceed amount of a little over one point three million, so it could be a little less, and we, some staff time that they help manage this. So that comes in around twelve point two, twelve point three million. So you look at our existing funding, we have about nine point five million set aside for this, there's a small amount of non-participating items that are with A W A's facilities that have to be relocated, that's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of work that they would have to fund. So that pays, I put that available funding about nine point seven, the shortfall of about two point five, two point six million. So that's, that's where we're at. Then, you know, as far as looking at potential additional funding, we have some, you know, if you look at external sources, there's, there's Caltrans, although, you know, we've reached out to, to district staff for District Ten, Caltrans, and, you know, quite frankly, I, I'm not confident that you're going to see any more dollars coming from Caltrans on this project.
I think we need to point out history on that, that when Caltrans, I think it was Sanos Los County, had a project that went significantly over budget, they stole our money. I think we need to point that out to them.
Yeah, no, that, no, that was a different, that was the bridge program.
Bridge program.
But the point's well taken, I mean, they, I mean, that's a different pot of money and.
Different pot of money, but you know what, it's, it's time for them to, to realize that what works for one works for everybody else, too.
The other potential source of funding, or should I call external, is through ACTC, which is, who's pointed up or, or has gotten these funds together over the course of several years. I, I don't know if there's, that's a real good possibility or not. I know recently they've set a policy that, you know, all their funds that they manage are to go to the local road projects and not to state highway projects anymore. So that, that's something they've done over the last six or eight months, they've put into place. So I, and, and Mr. Gedney can address that further if you want, I, so I, I'm guessing that source is probably not there as well. I've also listed some internal funding sources, which are not favorable from my point of view, but, you know, in, in fairness, to explain the options that really are available. We've got a, our, our local transportation fund allocation, A T T, ACTC, it's about seven hundred and thirty thousand, that's, that's there now. I can, we can look into next year's S B one funds, that's usually about two point two million a year, but that helps fund our, our normal road repair and rehabilitation. Um, I can, we can look into next year's SB one funds, that's usually about two point two million a year. But that helps fund our our normal. Uh. Road repair and rehabilitation on that we. Uh, are due on an annual basis, so. Um. Is that there? You have your general fund reserves that are available as well. Now, I don't think any of those options are are very, in my opinion, are. Are are real um, appealing, but. That's for you guys to decide, but you know, I just feel that's something that, you know, lay it on the table. Um. So when I step back and look at this, there's. We really have four options to look at right now. Uh, one, you just, we do do nothing at this time and see if external funding shows up. But that has to happen. Um, within the next. Month or so, because our deadline of January twenty-first is where we have, if we want to move forward with the project, we have to. Award the 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 um, contract by that date. Um. Use our external funding sources and award the contract right now. To the lowest responsible bidder, George Reed. Uh, we could reject all the bids. And and you'd have direct staff to to go back and take a look at the project and try to scale it back. So that um, a scaled back project would fit within the existing funding sources that we have. And that's something, if that's something you want to look into, uh, the the Mark Thomas engineers are are can can address that. Um. We've had some preliminary discussions with Caltrans on that, and they seem, they've indicated that they would work with us. To if we were to reduce the scope to a certain degree that. They would um, as far as their review, they would expedite that and such, and so that we won't get bogged down in a lot of. Extraneous review and such, it's not really necessary.
Just to clarify, if we were to change the project to to scale it down, it would have to go back through the Caltrans review review process. And we would not be able to meet that January twenty-first deadline.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Yeah, no, that is.
Would we use with thoughts like that, would we be able to? Put it out? To bid fairly quickly for next building cycle?
Well, I mean, if they're gonna expedite review, maybe.
I would say.
Consider that to mean.
I think uh, to some extent, uh, cost escalations have occurred because Caltrans is so slow.
They don't know what expedite means.
And and Oliver right away, um, easements probably will expire.
Bet they were. Check.
Two more years?
I think it's two.
Yeah, I know we've got them for a certain amount of time.
Um, Mark Hopkins, Public Works. Um, we do have all of our TCEs. For six years. Um, so we are in year two, so we still have another four more years that those are still good. Um. The expedition of Caltrans. We would be looking at. They would still go through m- most of the review, we're probably estimating. June as the time that we would be able to try to put it out again, so.
So that would be out of this building cycle?
Yes, yeah, we'd probably lose this this uh, building season. Might, it might be able to start something at the very end, but basically, yeah, for the most part, this building season would be lost. Um. The other option is you reject the bids and and say that, you know, this project is. You know, we could not move forward with it anymore. And uh, there's a um, certain amount of funds would just disappear. From from the county, from from the area, would not be able to come back here. There's some that would come back. To to ACTC for reallocation and and John could probably um, expand on that more if you need to talk about that more. Um. There's no guarantee what ACTC does with those funds, um, whether they goes to. Uh, local roads, whether it goes to transit, whether it goes to uh, alternative fuel. Um, projects or whatever, so I mean, that that's up to that organization as well.
Uh, there's no guarantee that a significant amount is going to go into county roads, because the cities have their list of projects, which is very extensive.
That's true. That's true, I mean, we were fortunate this last cycle. To secure um, the county for county roads, uh, you know, uh, upwards of three and a half to four million dollars. For um, road improvements for the county. Um, but I wouldn't say that would would occur. All the time in the future. I think we just. We're fortunate enough, we did our homework and was ready to to answer the questions when they were there, so. So that's, in essence, you know, what I what's what's happening, I think the. Try to lay out what's what reasonable options this group has to do. Um. We've asked uh, um. The Design Engineer, Mark Thomas, to to be able to answer any questions with regards to the project bidding. If you have questions on why the bids were high or low, or you know, why why items were where they are. Um, we've also asked them to look at. Um, at least in in the short timeframe that they had. Um. The feasibility of being able to scale back the project. Um. I think the option that we were looking at is to scale back the project so that the project would terminate. At the Irish Town Road intersection, so it would. Would not proceed any further west. I think they've looked at some numbers and to see how feasible that, you know, in a rough sense, what it would look like. They've only had a week or so to actually be able to to.
And do we have any feedback on that?
Excuse me?
Do we have any feedback on that?
Yeah, they'll be, they would be able to address that, so I don't want to. Put words in their mouths necessarily, so I, you know, whenever. They're they're certainly available to to address the board and and to discuss these items as as you as you wish.
Well, Mr. Gedney, do you want to come forward to? Have any of your input on this?
He doesn't want to.
We want him to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, John Gedney, uh, ACTC. Um, I'm actually interested in hearing Premier Consultant, Mark Thomas. Uh, we have the bid comparison your staff has done, and I think there's some significant line items that need some explaining. So um.
Traffic control.
Uh, try a rock, the concrete pipe, uh, costs are way, way uh, beyond the engineer's estimate, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear. Consultant um, address that if you if you would, you would as well. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Hey, go ahead and, who was it that needed to? Go ahead.
Good morning, hi, Matt Rogan, uh, Principal Engineer with Mark Thomas. Uh, I have Jake Weir, Jake Weir with me as well, uh, he is our our Project Manager. Uh, we have assessed the bids, and as everyone knows, in a low bid environment, there, you know, some things we we. Don't control availability of materials, availability uh, of uh, contractor workers, uh, timing of those improvements, timing of. When the bid comes in as far as time of year and other work that they have ongoing. Uh, but Jake has done some analysis of the bid, uh, in particular, the items uh, that have been discussed already. Uh, and Jake, can you just give a little bit of analysis of those line items um, that jumped out to us from the bid? The actual bid documents?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Um, yeah, so as as Rich highlighted, and um, as a member of the Board mentioned. Um. You know, traffic control was an elevated item that came in much higher than we anticipated, I and. So my my assessment is that that. Uh, there's so many working days allotted to this project that all the bidders are bidding on, uh, that that's a constraint. And. The, in my opinion, the contractors perceived traffic control was needed more working days than 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 we did. Um, essentially that they're they're building in. Kind of the constraints of the corridor and essentially inefficient working conditions that that, you know, our our assessment was that. For instance, for building sidewalk, they could, they could do traffic control demo, start setting forms, and then traffic control wouldn't be needed for a number of days while they're. While they're moving along the corridor, that was not their assumption, um, clearly by their their bid. Um, they were assuming traffic control almost every single day. So.
I think, I think.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I do some traffic control, sometimes m- minor type stuff in my business, and. If you start uh, doing preventing wage or hiring subcontractors do traffic control. In a situation like up there Pine Grove, a multiple roads and stuff that you have going on there in the school, you'd go through a hundred thousand dollars, I think, really fast.
Yeah, I I agree, and I mean, it 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 comes down to how many days do you need it? And the in the contractor's view. Um. They need it for. You know, many more times than than we assume, um, generally what we're, we assume. Something like twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars per day. Um, and so clearly they were thinking they would need it. Almost every day. Based on that bid, the low bid. The other items, uh, I wanted to address, um, the. Pricing on the concrete flatwork, beating the driveways, sidewalk, curb curb and gutter, curb ramps, et cetera. Um, the the low bidder price, uh, that they're pricing on 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 those. Items were elevated. Our estimate, the the second bidder, um, you know, our estimate was basically in between the second bidder and the low bidder. So uh, for for some reason, the 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 second bidder. Was able to find some very efficient pricing on that item, and those came in well under the estimate, but however. You know, it's not like we can pick and choose the sub consultants and the teams and how they're constructed, so unfortunately, the low bidder. Had much, you know, those prices were very elevated. Uh, for all the flatwork on the project. Um, so. The other item I wanted to address uh, was reinforce reinforced concrete pipe. Um, basically, there's there's drainage work wherever there's sidewalk and driveway construction. And I think the elevated pricing on on that is again, related to kind of inefficient working where contractor has to kind of plug away. Uh, in in short segments, and it's not like they can. Reasonably install, given the site conditions, long stretches of pipe at a time. Um, so uh, again, the second bidder. Both both second and low bidder, their their pricing was was higher than the estimate. Um, second bidder was a little bit lower, but. Pretty similar pricing in general. Um, so so we we have some ideas if the if the Board. Elected to to move forward, I think this is a. Pipe material is is an area where we could look at other options to to provide some some savings in the project. Reinforced concrete pipe is kind of the default, given the. Um, performance, longevity, et cetera, but there are other options that are. Um, also good alternatives.
What does that mean, would we use different pipe or or?
It's something that we could consider, i- if the Board were to direct the the. You know, county staff.
How much would that? How much would that save?
I think that could save twenty-five, twenty-five percent at least.
You're going from what type of pipe to what type?
Concrete to a. To a um, HDPE, a a high strength plastic.
Oh, high density polyethylene?
Yes, yes, correct, that 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 could be an alternative that we can look at.
How would Caltrans feel about that?
They use it on their projects as well, and they're a partner. Um, in in our drain studies, that was an alternative.
You know, you're probably okay, you're probably okay in Pine Grove, but I did some work up off Highway fifty, it was a little bit heavier forested land. And I had an old man tell me one time, but oh, yeah, that plastic pipe, if you get some fuel. That fire burn right through and burn it out, and I thought, you know, I wonder if the old guy's right. But when I saw off Highway fifty is all that plastic pipe. It was all burnt out, so you're driving across basically dirt bridges. Um, so it's, if you have a lot of fuel, it's something to consider.
Yeah, yeah, um, CMP, corrugated metal pipe and plastic pipe, I could see that be being a concern. Uh. If fire is a major risk. Did the Board have other kind of questions, I I hit kind of the highlights? Again, uh, Rich mentioned. Asphalt pricing from George Reed was very favorable and under our engineer's estimate. Um, the second bidder. Their pricing was elevated. But again, it the projects that I've seen from George Reed, sure, sure, go ahead.
I have a question, so if we were to implement these cost-cutting measures, would we be able, h- how much would that reduce the cost?
So a- again, with with. Kind of loo- looking for a pathway forward to to find a project within available funding. With room, if if we're going to miss the construction season and bacon. You know, some anticipated price inflation. Um. I'm confident that we could get down uh, in the low. You know, s- seven point two five million, so that's shaving. Um. What is that, a little bit more than? Two, two and a half million range?
But to clarify, Jake, that is with reduced project limits as well?
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
That's that's the re, you know, the reduced project in itself completely.
Yes, yes, uh, switching pipe material and some other. Kind of value engineered items would not be enough.
Is that the reduced project, just taking the existing project and doing cost-cutting measures? Or does that also mean uh, stopping at Irish Town Road?
It would, it would be both, yeah, Irish Town Road and. Um, o- other measures that we could look at, like the pipe material, et cetera.
Well, that still doesn't leave us a whole bunch of cost overrun just at at reducing that project then. You know, for our contingency funding.
That would cover it.
The ten percent would still be in there.
Okay.
And I think what you're going to run into, as complex a project in, I'll say this, I like George Reed's company, but we're still looking. We're looking at a project up there. Um. As complicated as that project appears to me as a layperson. Um, I think the propensity to have a pretty major cost overrun up there, or you know, add-ons and. I think it's huge, because you've got all kinds of infrastructure up there. Uh, Pine Grove, it's been there quite a while. Um, and I know sometimes in some years ago, when they put in underground infrastructure in, they didn't always uh, market very well. I know I was going to road one time, it's like, wow, there's a telephone line, and it was like. So I don't know if they didn't bury it deep, or somebody graded the road a number of times, and it was. Fire would have been a foot, two foot deep, it was like. One inch. But I, so I think, and there's there's, I think the um. Propensity to have a a huge cost overrun is 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 large, is 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 great.
Yeah.
And so we get committed to this project. And our our numbers are higher than what we like, and all of a sudden, we're we're, you know, we got ten percent contingency, and. We get in there and it's, oh, we found this, there's that, um. Yeah, I think I think the chance of uh, this thing burying us are really good. Figuratively speaking, of course.
Mr. Vila. Question for you. We're only thirty-two days out from the the actual award date, so I think we should do a hybrid and combine a couple of these. And uh, do nothing right now. Wait, work with Caltrans, nothing's going to happen during the holidays. Conceivably after the first, maybe we we might make some headway if we put some pressure on Dennis Agar and. District Ten to uh, do the right thing, as you've done with other projects like the bridge project, where you.
He's retiring at the end of the year.
Hmm?
Mr. Agor's.
Well, we're the next director, but where they stole amateurs' money, then. Uh, look for other projects where they might be able to borrow that money. And then go to number three where we, uh, if that doesn't work, reject the bids and direct staff to scale the project back. We're not going to lose that much time.
So just virtually just bring this back to our next meeting.
Out, maybe the second meeting?
I don't think we'll.
Might have, might be after the twenty-first, it'd have to be in the first meeting.
Yeah, either would have to be your first meeting, or you'd have to call a special meeting in between to to address this one.
Probably better to call a special meeting because you're you're not going to get much done. By the eleventh. Ninth, yeah.
You know, I have a a question, um, it might be a Mr. Gedney question possibly. As far as the funding. It talks about their like, um. There's a carryover of unused right-of-way funds. Those funds um, are federal, so I mean, really, it's not like they're losing those funds, so what else could you use it for if you're not doing this?
So I mean, really, it's not like they're losing those funds. What else could you use it for if you're not doing this project?
They're state funds.
They're state funds? Why is it state federal?
They're regional improvement program funds.
No, I'm talking about the R I P shares. It's, I'm curious, unused. R O W, isn't that right of way funds?
Right of way funds, right. Those were programmed from our R I P shares into the state transportation improvement program.
Okay. And that, so there's no way to, no way to bring those back? Could we request it?
Those, those are, those are, that's a difficult pot of money because it was programmed on the right of way phase. They need to be spent within a particular timeframe. We, you have the opportunity to move funds from one phase to the next. We did it with the environmental phase. With the design phase and we could do, we did, we did it with the right of way phase. But if you don't spend the money on the subsequent phase, in this case, we don't continue through to construction, those funds would go back to the state pool.
So there's, there's no other, other project we transfer them to if this didn't happen?
Not that chunk. Not that chunk. We, there's a variety of funding sources and funding amounts that we have in the program that could revert. But that's one that probably would not because it has to be spent in a subsequent.
What about other? Oh, oh, hold on Frank, I'm, I'm still going here. You said probably not. So really, we don't know an answer then?
No, well. If, if the project did not proceed to construction. The funds would lapse due to time.
So if, if we stop today, there's no way you can, can allocate them to another project?
That's correct.
Okay.
Some of the.
Some of the funds. That's just a portion of the funds that are, yes.
What about other grant funding like the infrastructure bill to close the gap, so to speak? I'm assuming roads are part of that.
Right. There's an allocation from the infrastructure bill that has been. Blocked granted to California. And then California State Transportation Authority Agency has determined how those funds are allocated to various programs. Yes, those are available for competitive requests.
Can we put a last minute request in?
Yes, I'm sure we could.
I mean, ours is, you know, as shovel ready as they get, right?
That's true. That is very true.
You know.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. I'll be next then.
It seemed to me that we've got a project that we can't afford. Now we're deciding that we're going to go down to maybe a smaller project that we can barely afford. If everything just aligns right and the pipes are where they're supposed to be. From a business standpoint, this makes no sense. You just have to admit this was a bad project. We just can't do it. And we've got other uses for that money. Now, if it goes back around and they come up with hypothetically, just they put the stoplight in it. Volcano Pioneer Road and they work on the access egress. And forget about the sidewalks. And I have the largest landowner in the city of Pine Grove told me those sidewalks are the stupidest idea she ever heard of.
She told me the same thing.
So why we're trying to melt this, we're trying to shove ten pounds of mud into a two pound coffee can. It's crazy.
And I'd like to say this also. Basically tying what Pat was saying. It's not your fault. This thing came in over budget substantially. And that's not looking at, if we, if we delve into the, into that. Into that morass of. Infrastructure that's underground up there. So it's, it's over budget. If we stop where we're at now. Are my numbers right? We have six million dollars that could go towards local roads? City and county? Approximately five, looks like five point. Nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. Five million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You, you do have a million dollars in the regional traffic improvement impact fee program. That would go back to that program automatically that is administered by an oversight committee. Under A C T C. The four point eight million in R I P shares is the big ticket item. That's state funds through the state sales tax, gas tax. Those monies were programmed to this project last year. The C T C took action to do that. Technically, there are funds. We say that they could be reallocated to A C T C. I'm not sure how easy that would be because if, getting down to the weeds a little bit on this. If you did. Stop this project. You, Caltrans would require us, California Transportation Commission would require us, require, require us to. Undergo the closeout process. That's an arduous process to account for all the funds that have been previously spent. To justify why the project is not going to continue. That takes quite a while. And you know, you just mentioned how long the process does take when you're dealing with. The Oversight Agency that we're dealing with. So to say that that money could come back, I think we could justify that money coming back to us. We could go through the process to close out the project. It would take some time.
Yeah. And so, and then you got the L T F fund. So basically there's. A high probability we could have six million dollars to go towards local roads, whether it's in the city or the county.
That's true.
And Mr. Gedney, but was it Mr. Agar at the A C T C meeting? Said that they would take fractionals off of for expenses that they incurred. So we'd only get a net amount in fairness to the whole. We're not, probably not going to get it all back.
That's the, that's the answer we've gotten from staff. They do say that there would be some funds lost. They don't say exactly what would be lost or what they'd expect to be sent back. We'd have to work out, work all that through.
Just for the sake, everybody knows.
Now, do we have the option as, as we talked about here is, is. Is scaling this project back to what Supervisor Crew said is just. The, the school entrance and a stoplight sitting there. Is that option under this project still applicable? I mean, this is a serious scale back, you know, just to a, a traffic light and redo the school entrance onto the highway.
Now that the school entrance change is because of the traffic signal.
Right.
That on the highway or Pine Grove? Volcano Road we're talking about changing?
Pine Grove, Volcano Road.
Because if you signalize that intersection.
Yeah, those have to go together.
Yeah, I mean.
Right.
Signalize intersection. And when you signalize intersection, that egress out for the school needs to be moved. Because it's too close to the.
Understand it, but if that was the project.
Yes, so.
If that was the project.
I think what would happen is that really changes the. Scope so much. It's not to say we couldn't do that, but it would probably reopen a lot more review. And scrutiny from Caltrans. I'm not sure how these funds. I don't know the, the shelf life of these funds. You might be able to adjust that better than I, but you know, so. You would, the scope, to, to reduce the project that much, would we? Would probably put, push it out a little more into the future because it's going to take a lot more review. And I, I don't know if Caltrans's shop money. Would remain with this project or not, because you're reducing the scope of it quite a bit. So there's some unknowns there. If, if we, if we shrink it that much to basically. Signalize an intersection and improve the, the pavement and amenities in that section. You would have to widen. The, the pavement and provide for turn lanes or whatever, but. In essence, that's what, what that would be. But that, they would certainly. Would, again, it would. It would spur more of a critical eye on it from, from, from Caltrans.
I think we, lens credence to what Mr. Crew said a while ago about his. Misgivings on the project. I think he just basically affirmed what he said. One thing I, I also like to bring up to. I, I, in, in life, you know, you hate to make a mistake. Or maybe not the best of choice in life. We all do at times. You always want to do the best choice you can possibly. Sometimes in life, things change. Something else, I've had a, more than one person brought up to me. They said, hey, that. School access on the Pine Grove Volcano Road seems like a solution to school problem, which it is. There is a problem there. In the morning and afternoon. I won't say there's not. But that school access on the Pine Grove Volcano Road, you're going down a real steep slope right there. Onto one of the colder, icier places. In the whole darn county. I know when it's, when it's, when it's bad weather. I try to stay off. Pine Grove Volcano Road where it's right, right by, right below the school. Or going down in the volcano. I just say, you know, I'm not going down there. And also Charleston graded coming out of volcano. Those areas are places I don't go. So we're going to be putting how many cars right on the Pine Grove Volcano Road right above the icy spot in the winter time? So they're even got to be turning left. You're going to have, you're going to have. Intersection blockage there at that intersection. Or I'll, I'll go right down towards, and I'll swing around, hit Aqueduct Road and up eighty-eight and they go down the bobsled run. And also there's two local engineers who competency, competency I respect. They both teed off on that road going from the school down the Pine Grove Volcano Road. They said it's not good. One, one, one person was talking about the grade. And just a number of things. Other guy brought up, he's, well, that soil there is not going to hold. And this person happened to work as a local engineer for Caltrans. For a number of years. And it really got my attention. And I thought, you know, I wish I'd heard that earlier. But I think, I think if we continue forward, we're probably building a problem.
And if we downsize or petition them to downsize, we have to leave our money with them.
It would remain programmed.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're actually better off to. Reject all bids and to Supervisor Forester's point, if that gives their attention and they kick more money in. They're more liable to do that if we know we're bailing.
No, I'd support Caltrans taking on the project and maybe helping us out and doing it. I mean. Help them all I could.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think there are some options here that we can pursue. Really delve into that, that bid, that line by line on those bids. What you didn't hear from your consultant was. You heard the, the total savings if we negotiated better on the, on the bids and reduced the scope, but. The bids themselves, if we negotiated on the current offer to construct the entire project. There's a lot of room to negotiate just there that could get a lot of the cost of the project down as, as a whole.
Can we?
At the same time, we could negotiate with, with, I'm sorry.
Can we do that? And see if we can knock down the price and see if we can bring it back?
You know, there's a question on that. I think Frank brought up a good point. Legally, can you do that Greg? I, I don't think you can.
Didn't bring up that point. I don't think you can change the project with the low bidder and then say, hey, we're, we got a different project. We could give us a better deal.
You'd be in all kinds of lawsuits.
That, that's not, that's not, not what I'm saying. I'm just saying your consultant didn't give you just the. Analysis of the, the bidder's price versus the engineer's estimate on this, on this project as a whole. That's what I'm saying. He didn't give you that today so far.
Right. But you know, the, the whole thing is that because it's bitted, I mean, you, we have a bid there. There's not a whole bunch of change we can make to that other than minor things in the project itself. And that won't bring it down two point eight million dollars. So.
Say we bring it down a million and a half, now we're only a million off with still the contingencies. Like dangerous game.
What do you think we could negotiate with?
Well, as, as your consultant mentioned, the concrete pipe. He can use a different material and save four hundred thousand dollars there.
Do you think we could do that with this contractor or you're, you're talking about rebidding?
Re, yeah, rebidding, yes, absolutely, rebidding.
Okay.
No, I, I still think looking at the alternative of. Of talking to Caltrans over the next month and seeing what we can do. If, if, if that fails, we've lost thirty-two days. And then go back to reject all bids and, and work with staff to redo the project on a smaller scale.
I'm not fine with that.
It, it would be nice to have some kind of sheet that outlines. What's possible, like with respect to scaling back the project and what that means because it, maybe it's too early, but that's, that's. The question that this board has to consider. And we don't have that in our, you know, we've had a guy saying, well, we could do this, we could do that. Well, how much is all these things going to save? Is that possible? How do we go about doing that? Clearly, we can't negotiate with the lowest bidder. You know, on the fly. I, I guess it doesn't work like that. I mean, it seems reasonable to me, but anyhow. And how much is that going to save us? And can we get close? And I think if we can get close, then maybe we can still close the gap.
Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, if you work with a little bidder, you, you only have. Up, I think it's up to ten percent at the very most that you can change. Otherwise it changes the integrity of the bid. And then it opens up the contractor to be able to come in and, and ask for changes. And then you have your other contractors say, well, if that was what you were going to do, we would have bid it differently. And so you, you don't want to get into that because that, that'll open up a, a hornet's nest. So if, if we were talking about a few hundred thousand dollars, we could work with a little bidder on that. But when we're talking two and a half million dollars. On a ten million dollar job, no, that's, that's, there's too much adjustment there to, that we, that we can do.
Well, we need to open up to the public. So let's see if anybody is, from the public could like to come forward.
Good morning supervisors.
Morning.
Morning.
It is still morning.
Yes, it is.
Got a lot to say, but we'll try to keep it simple.
Jan, could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Jan Houghton, Pine Grove. I'd say ten to twelve years ago, this program, this project was implemented. When the county paid for a consultant to come in and evaluate. The integrity in the project and the. Of the Highway eighty-eight corridor. Just before the implementation of this project, a traffic study was held. And the corridor received a grade of D. Which is pretty bad. Another study, I believe, if done today. Would more than likely garner an F grade. Because the traffic has anecdotally. Increased exponentially from when this was done. It's terrible. So the consultant came in and established. A committee of local stakeholders, of which I was one, representing the Pine Grove Civic Improvement Club. We met every month for two years. And came up with twelve scenarios for the corridor. They were whilled down to one project. Which is the simplest and that was split into three phases. Several public meetings were held. And the phase before you is the survivor to date. And that has been tossed about. Several government entities with escalating costs and setbacks. The. When I hear what you've been saying today and setting back even more and more. There were millions of dollars already spent for this consultant. And, and everything that transpired between then and now. It's going to cost a heck of a lot more if the project is delayed and you have to start all over again. There's an old adage that says, pay now or pay later. And if you. If you do delay this project and it could be up to another ten years. I guarantee it will be in a significant increase in the cost. And I would dare say probably double, considering the inflation and the way prices are going up. So Linda, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Linda Berman. I'm a Pine Grove.
Okay, I'm Linda Berman, I'm a Pine Grove resident for twenty-five years, and I've seen the conditions on the highway get a lot worse. I'm here to address your concerns. I've heard you say, why should we spend money on a state highway when we have a lot of local county roads to maintain? And I'm here to tell you that Highway eighty-eight is not just a state highway. You have thirteen thousand residents in the up country. That's one-third of the county population, a third of the county population. And how do you think they get down to shopping, to the banks, the supermarkets, the schools, the junior high is down country, the high schools are down country? These residents have to use this highway on a regular basis to get out, not just for shopping and commerce, but in the case of a major fire, it would be a big safety concern, the evacuation, it's a major evacuation route. And I saw what happened during the evacuation of Pine Acres during the Butte Fire. Eighty-eight was a mess. It was a parking lot. So I'm here to tell you that, I mean, I use the highway probably three to five times a week, and I'm retired. Imagine the person that has kids in school or who has to work down country, what they have to put up going through there. So in addition, in the general plan, Pine Grove is considered a town center, and I think that we are entitled to have our road be acceptable. Right now, I don't think it is. And it's not like we're just asking for a handout. We're, the whole up country is unincorporated, Volcano, Pioneer, Pine Grove, all unincorporated, which means that our sales taxes, our property taxes, those all go to the county, and I think it makes sense to reinvest them in Pine Grove. So I encourage you, I, I can't tell you how to put a five, five pounds of mud into a two-pound coffee can, but I can't tell you that it's worthwhile to try. So I really ask for your support in doing what you can to save this project. Thank you.
And, and I will add that Highway eighty-eight is my main street. I live right behind Finesse Coput in that area. I use that road every single day. Cannot tell you how many times I have had to make a right-hand turn in order to make a left-hand turn. It's just the traffic has become unreal. But definitely, please do not put all the effort that was put into this project from the get-go to delay it even more, because it's not going to correct itself. The project is going to come up and bite you again, whether it's now or whether it's ten years from now.
May I ask, what would you, since you see that it's two point eight million dollars over budget, you know, and we don't have the money to fill that, what would you recommend? Do you recommend cutting the project? Where would you recommend cutting the project?
I wouldn't recommend cutting it all, but that's my opinion.
But we can't afford it.
That is, yeah, that may not be realistic.
Yeah, it may not be realistic.
As we're talking ten pounds in a, you know, a two-pound bag, you know, where do we, where, we have to figure out where we go from here, and that's the biggest problem. You know, and that's, you know, my, you know, my commute up and down the hill, because since I live in Pioneer, you know, I do that all the time. I see the elementary school as one of the biggest problems, you know, of the commute. The second problem that I see on the commute is everybody going into Aces. You know, that is the, you know, with the, the garbage truck trying to make the left, going into Aces or going into right, because he has to use up the whole highway to make those turns. I get it. I mean, I've seen that for eighteen years myself. So, but the problem is, is that we still have, we have a limited budget, you know, and that's where we're, we're at right now.
Well, I, I have no idea how you, I'm not sitting in your seat.
Oh, I understand.
And I have no idea what all the figures mean attached to such and such. I'm not an accountant. So I haven't, that's up to you. I'm just saying that this project has been manipulated and curtailed and spent on for so long, and it just doesn't make sense to shove it in the waste can.
Understand, thank you.
And, and I would hope that Caltrans would step up to the plate a little bit, too, because, you know, they have invested so much in this. So I myself have considered, after hearing the discussion today, writing to District Ten and letting them know how I feel as a taxpayer. So that's something I can do. But as far as the technicalities of how you fit ten pounds of mud into a two-pound bag.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not an expert on that. I can just tell you that it's worth trying to save this project.
I understand, I thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we, it looks like we have a.
We have another speaker.
I have it.
Another speaker.
Oh, go ahead.
Supervisors, I had no intention of speaking, but I live in downtown Pine Grove, so if you will permit me a few moments. I've lived in, within a stone's throw of.
Name?
Pardon? Oh, sorry, my name's Logan Cornell, and I've lived within a stone's throw of Pine Grove Elementary my entire adult life. My wife and I have owned three homes that have received letters that could have, those homes could have possibly been, possibly been affected by this road project. After about ten years, we just started throwing them away because we didn't, but, you know, we got, we put a lot of effort into them in the beginning, thinking our house was gonna be taken away, and at this point, well, after a while, we gave up. But we dropped our kid off every single morning or picked our kid up every single afternoon in, at Pine Grove Elementary for kindergarten to sixth grade, and I drive the roads in Pine Grove more than anyone but Amazon or UPS. And sure, we'd love to see improvement, but my child who went to Pine Grove Elementary is now about to graduate Fresno State, and she would like to move back. She actually wants to live on Irish Town Road, and we also have the concerns that I want her to be able to afford to live here and to be able to drive on other roads that are repaired as well. So we'd love to see the project happen in some way, but not at the expense of the county going into more possible debt and more roads not being finished. So I'm liking the idea, because I also own a business, and I agree with you, it sounds insane to gamble on the fact that maybe we'll only miss it by two million dollars. I don't, that, that, we don't, that seems like it would go a long way. So I don't know if I'm helping. I'm saying, I, I agree and I don't agree at the same time.
I agree, I agree with what you said, as far as we have a lot of other roads that need to be finished or fixed.
Yeah, Irish Town Road is, yes, Taboo Road is, you're right, we have a lot of roads.
Fiddled down.
And it sounds like, even if we didn't keep all of this money, some of this money, but there's also, I don't know, we have a little bit of time, it sounds like, to look at some much sidewalks in Pine Grove, the only people I see use that sidewalk is the new owner of, Guy Saw Center takes her kids to the school in the morning. They go to nowhere. They, they pass the, the one passes the saw shop and the vet, and then ends. And so I, I mean, things like sidewalks seem, have a far less importance than, than the roads. So I, I don't know, I'm hoping there's some way to possibly fix it. I also, for about ten minutes in the morning and ten minutes in the afternoon, traffic is absolutely terrible in Pine Grove, but the rest of the time, sometimes it's a ghost town in there. So unless Kirkwood just got out or it's a Memorial Weekend. So if we could just fix the intersection somehow and not spend all that money, we'd be much obliged.
Thank you. What, excuse me, what intersection are you talking about? The one by the school? Or Irish Town?
Yes, the, yeah, the exit, the egress of the.
Of the school?
Of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I think just, you know, the, the overrun is only two point, roughly two point five million, not two point eight, two point six. But also, you know, we have other funds, too. Okay, we can spend it on this project. This project has been around for a long time, it's been whittled down, and I don't see this money necessarily being reprogrammed for our roads, not to mention, we'll throw away a good three million dollars. You know, the, there's a lot of people in the Pine Grove area, this will revitalize their community, make, make their downtown a better area as well. And I think investing in the city of Pine Grove is, is a real benefit for those residents, not only for those residents, the businesses there, but also the values of the homes there. And, you know, I, I think we need to make this project happen. We also have reserves, too. I mean, what are reserves for?
I'll say this, I do business in Pine Grove, a fair number of businesses, and I can't think of one that has lobbied me to do it.
I can.
I can think of some that told me they don't, they don't like it. And also as far as addressed, what the lady said about the level of service being a D in Pine Grove, remember, it's a number, number of years back, I think the level of service on the bypass going past Sutter Creek, so the new bypass was a level, like a level C. I thought, my God, everybody, everybody's doing seventy miles an hour there, and there's no, there's no traffic slowdown at all. So it was kind, so the numbers can be a little bit tricky. You know, and this project, it's been around a long time. I know Supervisor Plas worked real hard, I helped all I could. Before his time, it was, I think it's a hundred million or two hundred million dollars, those crazy numbers out there. And then it got down to where, it was about, roughly gonna be about forty, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, forty million dollars. And that was reduced further, and people said how horrible we were. That, that's, you know, you look at, and what, what happened was somewhere along the way, I think some, some people realized this was money the county could control. That was kind of what people didn't know, because you wouldn't go to some meeting that said Caltrans, and it appeared to be a Caltrans project. I mean, the first meeting I went to, I was real new. I looked at that, and I thought, wow, God, Caltrans sure spent a lot of money here. I thought, you know, the actual value, what they're getting really isn't that much, but I thought, why should I fight with Caltrans if they wanna break the bank in Pine Grove? Later on, I think it was Supervisor Plas and ACTC, and when they say, Brian, he said, that's actually money that could be controlled by the county. And remember what I said, I won't say, might be, I won't say it over the, into meetings, it might be a little bit implied, but it was like, you gotta be, I mean, it was, I was astounded, that he, John was on ACTC, got to realize that. And I'm like, why in the hell are we doing that? It's a state highway. And John's like, yeah, I know. And that was when it got reduced down further. For a while, I thought, hey, it's probably okay, it's gonna solve, solve the problem there at the school, which I think it is a problem, that intersection. But then I ran across those two engineers, and one guy was a Caltrans engineer for a lot of years here, competent guy, and he's, Brian, what you guys are doing is you're not fixing the problem there at the school, you're just transferring it on the Pine Grove Volcano Road with that bank, that's unstable, unstable soil that's gonna collapse. So look at those things. I think I support Richard's thing, let's step back and see if Caltrans will step up the plate and help us. Maybe we'll still go through with it. I think I'd rather just say, you know, we have roads that are in bad shape, not just, not just an inconvenience getting through Pine Grove or whatever on a very good road, we've got culverts, I think, right now, that are still probably, not to put Mr. View on the spot, well, I won't, I won't, I won't ask him, but I don't think, I gotta go look, I don't think the culvert over New Chicago, that myself and Eddie Santinelli stuffed rocks in to fix a hole in the middle of the road. We took some big rocks, the hole wasn't straight down, the culvert was washed out, the hole in an angle, so we stuffed rocks in it. And then the road crew showed up, and they had some cold patch, we put the cold patch over the top of the pad, of the hole. I think that culvert is still like that right now, and we're going in the winter. We've got other culverts, and I'm not, I'm not blaming Richard, I think Richard's doing pretty good. We don't have enough money for our, our local county roads. They're really bad. Fiddletown Road, I'm embarrassed by. People chew my butt all the time, you know what? I don't think I deserve it, but they are right. And so I'm looking at the money we're gonna be spending on this, on a state highway. And we got roads that are getting where they're, they're still passable, but I don't know if I'd call them a road, they're kind of like a trail. Fiddletown Road's there, we'll probably spend some money there next year, and that, I think that's, there is, that is coming, which is good, but like Logan Cornell said, Irish Town Road, you know, Clinton Road, there's, there's other roads. I mean, we got a lot of need for a lot of money in the roads, and we don't have it. And now this has come in, it's come in a lot higher than what we can afford, and I'm having a couple engineers that, who I think are very competent engineers, saying, you know, you're fixed. If not gonna fix it, it's gonna make it, just transferring the problem from Highway eighty-eight down on the Pine Grove Volcano Road. So I, that's why I have some problems with this going forward. I'd like to stop right now.
Okay, we have a couple.
You could've said all that in five words, I am against this project.
I'm against this project. There you go.
We got it. Boomers?
Go ahead, so.
Go ahead, Catherine, when you're ready.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, this is Catherine Evid, I live on Shake Ridge Road. I wanna say, as a resident of Shake Ridge Road, I use Highway eighty-eight through Pine Grove probably as often as I use Shake Ridge west of my house in order to go to shopping, to go to the doctor, to run errands. So it is important to me, as Shake Ridge Road, as a local road, and I think that's probably true of everyone who lives in my area and east of me on Shake Ridge Road, which is a substantial section of the road. So spending money on that project is a benefit to us, even though it's obviously clear that the local roads need a lot of work. I also wanna support what the ladies from Pine Grove said, there was a huge community effort put into working through this project, and a lot of time and a lot of money. And, you know, it, it's obvious that you have a, a gap to fill, I can't answer how you're gonna fill that. I can say that I would strongly recommend you talk to Senator Marie Alvarado Gill about what she can do, and you talk also to our representative Tom McClintock, who could get an earmark for our county to fix the local roads if he so choose, chose to do that, but he has to be lobbied by the local officials. And I think I said this at the last hearing, Calaveras County managed to get water for wastewater treatment plant through a congressional earmark last year by working with our US senators. So just to say, we have no money and throw up your hands, and you're gonna have to live with bad roads in Pine Grove, just sounds like a weak excuse to me. So I would encourage you to do everything you can with the officials and with the smart engineers you have and the wise people you have, like Mr. Gedney, to try to find the funding for this project, and to do the best you can to make it a proper town center project with sidewalks for people who are walking with children and with safe turns and with a reasonable level of service. Thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, we've gone through public.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reject all bids and terminate the project in the spirit of fiscal responsibility.
I'll second that.
Ball for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, they failed?
Okay.
Two, three?
Can I make an alternate motion?
Yes, sir.
You voted nay?
I voted nay.
I would just say, I don't think it's fiscally responsible to, to lose three point six million dollars. And I understand, there's, there's issues with this project. A lot of people think sidewalks are good, are beneficial to it, a lot of people don't. But I would make an alternate motion to work with Caltrans over the next month to try and find some alternate funding sources, and if that fails, schedule a special meeting of the board to address this item before the one twenty-one, twenty-four date. At that point, possibly reject all bids and direct scaps to scale the project back.
So that your whole motion is to see if we can find the money, and then if second, to reject all bids and then scale back the project?
Under.
Look at that, at that point, yeah.
We're gonna leave the money with Caltrans.
What do you mean, leave the money?
You're not gonna reject the bids. You're gonna reject the bids, but you're gonna let them scale back the project.
Well, that, at that point, we don't have much of an option if we don't find other funding sources.
Now, are you saying hand the project over to Caltrans?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. But at this point, I think we have, our only option at this point is to work with Caltrans, see if there are other funding sources, and I, I do agree with Ms. Ebbett that there's an opportunity in the next budget, state budget, to get some money back from the state. Uh, Senator, Senator Alvarado Gill got us two point three for Ridge Road, money that we're putting in the Ridge Road, uh, Assemblyman Bigelow got us eight million dollars for the Pine Grove Fire Station. State has a lot of money, I, they are fiscally poor right now though, so that, that could affect that situation.
I think this next year's gonna be pretty tough, but I'm not saying you can't, Richard.
But there's always pots of money with the state.
But we've got a pot of money tied up in Pine Grove.
That's right.
With your motion, it would stay tied up.
We might still get that money back though, we gotta come back.
When?
We gotta come back in January and address that issue in a special meeting.
I'll say this, Richard, I support going forward to look at, say, hey, you know.
Would you terminate at the special meeting if we didn't come up with the funding? Terminate?
Well, we could reject all bids and, and then, uh, continue to look at scaling back.
Well, then they still have the money.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. So, we can't fix the local roads and we're doing nothing in Pine Grove?
Well, that's a, I think that's a fallacy, saying that all this money's gonna go into fixing our local roads.
I said fractionally.
I don't think we're gonna get a big pot of money, a lot of it's gonna go to the cities.
That's okay.
Which is better than leaving it with the state.
I, I understand that.
And that is fiscally responsible.
I don't think after working on this project for over ten years, that it's asking too much to go another month and then come back, uh, in a special meeting and reassess it at that point.
But then you're gonna go another couple of years because you're gonna reassess it.
We make the decision in January.
Can you say terminate?
Uh.
If, if we can't come up with.
I didn't say that in my motion.
I know you didn't.
You said that in the failed motion.
I know that, which is still a shocker.
So, that is my motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second. End discussion. Um, the reason Supervisor Cruz is kind of questioning my thought process on this is, is that I didn't want to put any more, I'm not gonna put any more county money into this, I'm not gonna put, um, if we can find some more Pete, I mean, P G N, excuse me, um, Caltrans money, I would put it into it, um, but I am still looking, that's the reason I questioned Supervisor Forrester's direction, um, to staff to allow to scale the project back, you know, to what needs to be done. And this is a conversation you and I have had numerous times, scale the project back to what is ultimately needed, and that's where I'm still going with this, and that's where I'd.
I mentioned that early on.
I understand, and that, but that's.
But I'm not gonna leave more money with them, it's why we're thinking about it.
Well, that, that's.
Well, I guess I am, because I lost.
So, um, we have a, a motion and a second, and so, um, we're gonna be making another, a special meeting in, that's up to. That'll be up to the new chair.
Chair to, uh, decide that, but, you know, on, on saying we're gonna get a pot full of money back, I expect that five point nine to go down to probably closer to four by the time they come back and say, this is what you owe us for all the work we've done.
Greg, um, curiosity question here is that if we don't have a meeting in January, does it automatically reject the bid by the twenty-first?
Well, at the time, if you don't accept the bid by the, by the date that the bid expires, then it expires, you can't accept the bid.
Okay, so it's, it just, you know, that's when, that's kind of what would automatically kill the project?
You could, well, you could ask the contractor if they would honor it beyond that date, but.
Stand or anything else? Okay. Well, can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Hell no.
Okay, three, two. So, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then come back to our, um, ten-thirty session. So, we'll see you then. Six dash one, annexation of number fifteen, discussion of possible action relative to public order. So, I'm opening the public hearing. Would you like to speak? Please come forward.
Good morning, President Brown, supervisors, members of the public, my name is Lynn Gruber, I'm coupled, with Coppell and Gruber Public Finance. We have been, uh, the special tax consultants since the formation of two thousand, CFD two thousand six dash one, and have been working with the county on the annexations, um, as they come through. So, as you said, today is the time and place for the public hearing and the consideration of the resolution to call the election and then asking the clerk to read the election, election results, and then adopt the resolution declaring the results of the election. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I had the first question is that we just did, I mean, I know this is a conglomeration that di, it could be in different fire districts, you know, it's in the different areas, you know, so it doesn't matter what fire district this is, but like for A F P D, we just did an, you know, assessment and it's ninety dollars. Now, this assessment, I mean, it's tax, it's not a se, uh, assessment, it is a tax, it's seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Why is there such a difference?
So, back in two thousand six, when we formed the CFD, there was an assessment in place as well, and at that time, it was determined that the assessment was not sufficient to pay for new development as it comes on board. So, the special tax was, uh, initiated, and then new development is conditioned to join the CFD and pays the higher rate.
Okay, and this is an annual rate, correct?
This is, mm-hmm, and it goes on the regular property, county property tax bill.
Hey, any questions from the board?
Why are we adopting a resolution determining to submit question of annexation territory to the CFD? We already submitted that to them, didn't we?
Right, well, so th, this is the, the actual board action to submit the question, you're right, they, the ballots have already been cast and, and.
So, we're doing it post-submital?
Effectively, I mean, they, if you didn't approve the resolution, then we wouldn't declare the results, but.
Seems like we should be voting on the question to submit before today.
The way the law reads is that you have the resolution of intention, which you approved on the No- November seventh, and then you come back to do the other actions. Because the owners have, um, approved consolidation of time and the election, it allows us to do all of these steps in one day, which seems a little bit odd, but that is what happens.
No.
The red crew?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Public, do I have, um, yeah, excuse me. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the board will now consider the resolution determining to submit questions of annexing territory to Community Facilities District, two thousand six dash one, Fire Protection Services, County of Amador, State of California, to the landowners in the territory proposed for annexation. Clerk, would you, uh, conduct the election?
That resolution needs to be approved by the board first.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution, two thousand six dash one, um, the question annexation of territory to Community Facilities District.
Second.
Two thousand six dash one.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That'll also be annexation number fifteen.
Okay, now we go to the clerk, sorry, missed a step.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, um, all the ballots have been received and the election is now closed, but if you'll just give me a second to open the ballots and tally them.
Okay, thank you. Do we have ballot counting music?
Yes, please, that would help.
(mimicking music) Oh, excuse me.
that you, that you have in your packet, and the total number of votes in the affirmative were, uh, two thousand four hundred and eight, no negative vote.
Okay, try it one more time.
So, there were six ballots approved.
Okay.
Or unapproved, received, uh, for the parcels that you have listed in your packet, I think there's ten different parcels, some of them are the same property owner.
Okay.
But there's ten total, and so, the total number of votes was two thousand four hundred and eight.
So, the votes are based on an acreage basis, one vote per acre?
Oh.
Or portion thereof? Does that, does that help?
That math ended twenty-four hundred, one?
Thank you, because that math was just not adding up. Okay, we have declaration of election results, the board will now consider resolution declaring the results of the special election to annex certain territory to the Community Facilities District, two thousand six dash one, County of Amador, State of California, annexation number fifteen.
Who to accept the results as presented?
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hey.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. We go on to four B, General Service Administration Capital Facility Annual Disclosure Review with Annual CCI Adjustment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors.
Morning.
I have presented you with the annual disclosure review for capital facilities funds for your review, uh, it indicates how much we collected during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and then, uh, and, and, um, a suggestion to increase the amount that we're collecting by two and a half percent, which line, aligns with the, um, construction consumer, uh, construction cost index, sorry, um, everything is there for you, um, if you have any questions for me, or?
Any questions?
No. I think, uh, we've seen a little bit of inflation, so.
Indeed, it's not a bad, this year.
Hey, our public has left us here.
Now, we got one public.
Oh, is, oh, I'm sorry, again, blocked by the view. Um, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Back to the board.
Karen, on page three of five, it talks about the expenditure of the funds, and it says on County Administration Center and the Sheriff Detention Facility, no fees collected during twenty-two, twenty-three were expended or transferred to the county. So, those funds, absolutely none of them have been spent?
Not for this particular year. Occasionally, we would move money from those accounts into, uh, capital improvement expenditures and whatnot. In this case, we just didn't do that during this fiscal year.
So, I would expect that might change in the next year.
Oh, it will definitely.
It'll be cleaned out, Richard.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move. To close public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, yes, you're right, we have to close public.
Yeah, we have to open the public hearing first, I don't know if you did that.
Okay, we open public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, there we go. Can we have a second in closing public hearing?
Second.
Now, do we have a motion on this item?
Move.
We didn't vote.
Yeah, we didn't vote.
Oh.
Oh, you know what?
Well, I'm just losing it today, I apologize to everyone, it's getting too close to Christmas. Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Ask what we're voting on, but I didn't want to stump you.
Okay, now, do we have a motion?
Move to accept the, uh, approve the resolution to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three annual disclosure and review, increasing the CFF by the two point five percent CCI effective July one, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
All for the vote again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dave, thank you very much.
I thank you as well. Uh, one other item that I want to bring up that's not on the agenda, but I was asked by Mr. Hopkins to inform you that the per capita grant from the State Parks and Recreation Department has officially been awarded to the county in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. We have a little bit more work to do paperwork-wise, uh, to make that come to fruition, however, I just, uh, wanted to inform you all that we can move ahead with the, um, Pioneer Park, um, improvements as far as that four hundred thousand.
And, and Fiddle Town.
And Fiddle Town as well, as far as it will go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Happy holidays to you all.
Okay, we're on to three F, review and possible approval of the December fifth Board Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, as my chairmanship comes to an end for this year, um, I want to thank my fellow board members for the privilege of being, uh, chairman, uh, that's very much appreciated, and Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody.
Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Outgoing Chair.
I have one to start, but this chairmanship virtually ends. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January ninth at nine AM, closed session begins at eight-thirty.